Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Land Use Committee Hearing. Before we start, I'm Councilman Ed Rice, Secretary Chair of the Committee. Before we go into the proceedings, I'm going to turn it over to Staffperson Land Use, Matt Peters, to give a presentation. Matt, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a brief presentation on some of the controls for WebEx. In the center, towards the bottom of your screen, you should have these controls available versus the control for the microphone, so you can mute and unmute yourself when you'd like to speak. Please keep yourself muted when you are not speaking. Right next to that, there is the control for the video. We ask that you please turn on the video if you're able whenever you are speaking, but otherwise can keep it off. Here we have the Participants button that will allow you to see who is participating in the video conference. And the chat function that you can use if you're having a problem you need to let the committee know about. And then more options, which we'll talk about a little bit more in a moment. And finally, the controls for leaving the meeting when it is over. If you hit the More Options button, you should have the option to raise your hand. If you've downloaded the full WebEx program onto your computer, that may instead be located in the lower right-hand corner. It's the same shape, it's just the hand, but in a different location. Most of us will probably have it in the More Options button now. At the top right-hand corner, you have options for View. So on the right-hand side is the Grid View, and you can choose the Presenter Screen and Participants, or just the Presenter Screen. And just some best practices for WebEx hearings. Try to find a quiet space with good light and strong Internet connection, so you can be seen and heard. Turn on the video when you are speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. Be present. Be patient with yourself and others. And wear headphones with a microphone to cut down on background noise, if possible. For public testimony, for computer users, the committee staff will be coordinating the public testimony, so please be patient. Use the Raise Hand function to indicate that you wish to testify, or that you have a question. And each speaker must state their name prior to testifying. For phone attendees, we are not able to identify you by name, and so when we get to the public testimony portion of the hearing, the committee staff will unmute callers one by one. Each caller will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. And if you hear those two beeps and you do not wish to testify, please just say so. If you do wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if we are having trouble understanding what you're saying, we'll ask you to call And, Mr. Chair, would you like me to do a roll call of committee members?
Yeah, go ahead and do a quick roll call. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, when I call your name, please respond to confirm that you are here. Chairman Rossinger?
Here.
Vice Chair Sneed?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Costello?
He's here.
Thank you. I'll just confirm for the record, Councilman Costello is here. Councilman Dorsey?
Here.
He just said here.
I'm here.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Here.
Councilman Middleton?
Here.
And Councilman Stokes?
Here.
Hey, Matt, can you hear me? Is Sarah Costello?
Yes, Councilman, I can hear you now.
Okay. You finished, Matt? Okay. We're here for City Council Bill 20-0525. The purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two-dwelling units in the R-E zoning district on a property known as 316 East 21st Street, Block 3813, and Lot 056, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, and also granting a variance from certain bulk regulations, which means lot area size. Public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilman Stokes, the sponsor of the legislation. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You did ask to repeat. It's just a single-family dwelling to two-unit dwelling in the R-E zone, meaning 316 East 21st Street. So, and it has the community support. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Agency reports, planning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission Committee, excuse me, Martin French for the Baltimore City Planning Department. At its regular meeting on May 28th of this year, the Planning Commission considered this City Council Bill. The Planning Commission reviewed an attached staff report, which you may have a copy of, which recommended approval of the bill, and heard public testimony concerning the bill. Planning Commission made a resolution, which I will read into the record. The Planning Commission finds, in accordance with Sections 5-308 and 5-406 of Article 32, zoning, that the conditions on which the application is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought, and are not generally applicable to other properties within the same zoning classification. The unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty is caused by this code and is not being created by the intentional action or inaction of any person who has a present interest in the property. The purpose of the variance is not based exclusively on its desire to increase the value or income potential of the property. The variance will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, or substantially diminish and impair property values in the neighborhood. The variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of zoning code. The variance is not precluded by and will not adversely affect any urban renewal plan, the city's comprehensive master plan, or any historical and architectural preservation district. The variance will not otherwise be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or be in any way contrary to the public interest. And further resolved, the Planning Commission confers with the recommendation of its departmental staff and recommends City Council Bill 20-0525 be passed by the City Council. The finding concerning the variance is based upon the fact that a unique situation exists in that the standard for R-E zoning districts is 750 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. This particular property is unusually small in terms of its lot area, although the building is quite adequate to support the number of units proposed. The Commission determined that it would be appropriate to approve the variance as part of the bill.
Okay, so that's part of your finding of facts?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. French, these are going to be very small apartments. And they're going to be used in the basement of the house as part of one apartment. Does it even have, does it have windows?
Councilwoman, I just have to, I'm sorry. If everyone would mute themselves because we're picking up background on those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Go ahead.
I know that I have all the confidence in the world in the sponsor of this bill. I just was reading the square footage and everything, and these are going to be very cellar, the basement, as part of one of the two apartments. Does that basement have windows? Did I just get lost?
If the owner is logged in for this meeting, I think you would need to ask the owner that question. However, obviously, the housing code and building code would not allow the use of a space, for example, for a bedroom that would not meet the housing code standards for a bedroom, which would include fire and safety issues. So either there are already sufficient windows, or there will be created sufficient window openings in order for this conversion to be approved by other agencies, such as the Department of Housing and Community Development.
And the Harwood Association?
Councilman, she's got, Councilman Stokes, she's got the floor. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, well, Councilman Stokes knows the answer here. Harwood, they like, they were for it, right?
Councilman Stokes?
Yes, and they do have windows.
Okay, good.
As it windows, yes.
All right.
I always look at the property.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark, are you finished? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. French? No? Okay, we go with?
Thank you all.
BMJ is favorable. DOT, no objection. Law Department?
This is Victor Vla for the Law Department. The Law Department originally said that we didn't have sufficient facts to approve the variance, but Mr. French, in oral testimony, has provided those facts. So if you agree, if you agree with the facts he's provided, then you are free to approve the bill as drafted.
Okay, thank you, Victor. Martin, did you get that? Martin French?
Yes, understood.
All right, thank you. HCD, favorable. Fire Department had no objections. The Parkland Authority did not oppose. So, Matt, do we have any public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Right now, there are no hands raised. Just a reminder, if anyone joining us by computer, please use the Raise Hand function to let us know if you would like to testify. And I will see if we have any callers now. Mr. Chair, it looks like we do not have any callers, and I do not see any hands raised. I think that is it for public testimony.
Okay, thank you, Matt. At this time, since there's no public testimony, and we've heard the agency reports, I need a motion to move the finding of facts.
No move.
Who moved?
Stokes moved.
Stokes.
I second Stokes.
Okay, motion moved by Stokes, seconded by Clark. All those who favor the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts is passed. There are no amendments to this bill. Do I have a motion to move the bill favorable?
Some moved.
Some moved.
Moved by Clark, seconded by Stokes. West State votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello, yes. George?
Yes.
George, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Pinkett?
Yeah.
Pinkett's yes. Stokes?
Stokes is yes, but, Mr. Chair, I just wanted, I have a 1:30 meeting, so after this bill, I have to step in.
Okay, I get it. We have eight. The affirmative, the bill passes. It's come out on second reader on July 20th. That concludes Bill 20-0525. We will now...
Councilwoman Clark, could you mute yourself? Oh, thank you.
We're, we are ready now to go on to City Council Bill 20-0531. The purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3006 Borman Avenue, Block 3185, Lot 48, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque. It's from the I-2 zoning district to the TOD-2 zoning district, and for changing the zoning for the properties known as 2926 Borman Avenue, Block 3185, Lot 51. Also, 2928 Borman Avenue, Block 3185, Lot 50, and Block 3185, Lot 49, as outlined in blue on the accompanying plaque, from the R-7 zoning district to the TOD-2 zoning district, and providing for a specific date. The public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, Councilwoman Middleton, you're the sponsor of the bill. You have anything you want to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues. So this, this bill right here is just, I look at it as an extension of the project that's going to really be happening at that corner of West Cold Spring and East Wabash, where the railroad tracks are, and, you know, the light rail and everything that's up in that area, that's really kind of a dead-end, dark street. And there's also some other little properties right at the end. All, this whole area has really been vetted with that Towanda-Grantley community. People, they've had community meetings, they had an extensive meeting with Park Heights Renaissance Board and staff. It's, it's, this has really been going on for, I'd say, almost a couple of years. And so the entire community is well aware of what's going on here. And then, going through all this, there was a correction that had to be, I look at it as a little technical correction of some of these properties that are being mentioned. And the Planning Department is, I'm going to let them go ahead and go through and discuss that, but I just want to say the community has left, they're in full support. I was at the commission hearing. There was also a person from the community that testified, and they're, they agree with getting this zoning correction made. And everyone is just happy to move forward and get some active, up-to-date things moving in that area. There's, the ground has been so, that area is so neglected, there's been hidden bodies and deaths and things happening there, so it's just, we're just anxious for that. So on that note, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll stop there.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to add and ask, Councilwoman, the other piece to this is because through the city, we, you know, being Chairman Land Use, I, and also Planning Commission, is the number of new luxury development, luxury apartments being built through the city. But I see here, how many was it, 163 affordable housing units? Am I correct?
Yes, rental, rental affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Right, up-to-date, you know, the green coating and everything. I mean, everyone's pretty excited. It's really like one of the first rental housing that's, that's going to happen. And, you know, they're, they've included in their plans, things for people that ride bikes, I mean, just all the amenities, and also being connected to that, that train route, the light rail route, is just going to be awesome.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will go with the Planning Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Eric Tiso for Baltimore City Department of Planning. This bill was heard by the Planning Commission on their meeting of May 28th. In working with the applicants and in making study of the area, this would unify the proposed development area that is currently split amongst three different zoning districts into a single TOD-2 zoning district that would enable this project to happen. There were a couple of things that are at play here that we believe contribute to what we hope will be a favorable decision by the council in this matter. In looking at it, the TOD, transit-oriented design, zone is intended for larger, denser developments. It's right across the street and railroad tracks from mass transit, so that is the stated purpose of that district. In looking at it, the other two portions here that are being rezoned from I-2 and R-7, respectively, were under the same ownership, or almost all that area was under the same ownership, and really should have been included with the TOD-2 during the citywide comprehensive rezoning of the city. While I was also looking at the area, of course, Planning Department tries to look at the bigger picture, and I noticed that there were two nearby homes, one that is on Borman Avenue, that is the last in the line of the single-family detached homes before it dead-ends, that had industrial zoning, which is more than a little odd. Now, the property next to it is a Bus Headquarters Depot-type building, which is appropriate for an industrial use, but I wondered why the home itself was industrial in its zoning. Then, half a block away, or I should say, on the back of that block, fronting on Grantley, I noticed that there was a property in the middle of a row of row homes that is zoned R-5, where all the surrounding properties are zoned R-7 residential. So of course, I wanted to dig into that, to see what the concerns were there, how they landed the way they were, and that instead of just perhaps having a recommendation for rezoning based on mistake, this actually might be shaping up into more comprehensive rezoning. So in looking at it, that R-5 property was picked up in about 2013, in the middle of the comprehensive rezoning process, as never having a new zoning code designation attached to it. There was a formal amendment put forth on the Six District Map Amendments in 2015 that would, that intended to correct it. So in the old zoning code, these properties were R-5. In the new one, it's R-7, and that value changed a little bit. So when the correction was done, there was an administrative mistake that reversed those two. So instead of clarifying that it should be R-7 like the others in the block, which was left as a blank in the database, the opposite happened, and the amendment accidentally, positively made it R-5, which is clearly an administrative mistake. Planning-wise, you would never have one row home in the middle of a block that is completely different district by itself than everything else. Likewise, the, the property on Borman, you know, why would we have a single-family detached house as industrial? So each of those, I recommended being included by way of an amendment. The applicants for the project on Cold Spring were very gracious to allow me to basically piggyback this into their bill, so long as it, you know, didn't slow them down, because that project is, is very needed for this area. And, believe it or not, we were trying to build it into a bigger, comprehensive rezoning process, which should actually make it easier to meet the required findings and standards. Of course, we have a public hearing. Notice of the Planning Commission meeting went out through double-re system to approximately 19,000 unique email addresses. We notified the community organizations in the area, Towanda-Grantley specifically. And then I sent a direct letter to the owners of the two properties that I was recommending for inclusion, letting them know that I was proposing that they be added as an amendment at the Planning Commission meeting, explaining that this would then make their non-conforming homes now conforming if it's adopted by the Maryland City Council, and that it basically would be to their benefit to have that happen. In the alternative, their homes will remain non-conforming, and should they wish to correct that at a certain time in the future, they would have to apply on their own for a separate bill. That means the additional cost for the application process, advertising notice, and so have you. So it's really to the benefit to fix these two while we're in there. So I believe, as outlined in my staff report, that the rezoning here could be supported in either case through comprehensive or through stake process. We understand Law Department had a procedural concern about advertising by posting the two properties that I'm recommending the council include this rezoning. The difficulty, again, the project applicants were gracious to include that in their newspaper notice, but they don't have permission to go onto somebody else's property to post a sign. If this were viewed as a comprehensive rezoning process, because it does, in fact, even as introduced, have multiple properties, from my reading of the zoning code, I don't believe that each individual property needs to be posted. I think just, you know, two or more per the requirements for comprehensive rezoning, posting should suffice. So hopefully, that will work. In the alternative, again, I sent direct notice to both of those property owners. One of them actually did attend and participate in the Planning Commission meeting and agreed, yes, I would like to have this correction to my home zoning. Unfortunately, I don't have minutes in front of me, so I don't recall off the top of my head which of the two it was, but we at least had one of them. These changes are in their benefit, it will solve their non-conformity, so I think any reasonable person would like to have that. So I think we meet the substantial compliance with the rules, or at least the general intent. We're not pulling a fast one on anybody, and we're certainly not taking anything from anyone. We don't want to slow this process down, so I would ask the council's indulgence if you have any latitude to keep this project moving forward. Thank you, sir.
Let's open this up. Any of my colleagues have a question to Mr. Tiso?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. You and yourself, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, I appreciate the department looking into correcting other things while we're in the process. I always think that's important to do. My question was about 2929 Borman. This bill is rezoning these properties on, it's, I'm sorry, I'm having problems with my computer, but we're rezoning 2525 Borman to TOD-2, but not 2529, which is the more prominent property, and is on the same side street, Wabash, as the other properties that we are rezoning to TOD-2? Can you explain the logic here, or why that didn't also get picked up in this effort to add conformity between these multiple properties?
Okay. Here is, I'm juggling multiple screens, and I want to make sure that I understand which one is, stand by one moment. I'm looking off the left.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at code map, and I'm seeing that we are rezoning, well, and I'm looking at the bill, and we're here to rezone 3006 Borman Avenue to, from I-2 to TOD-2. And we're looking to rezone 2925 Borman Avenue from I-2 to TOD-2. Am I correct about that so far?
That 25, 2925 Borman is one of the properties I have recommended to be included, yes.
And to make it TOD-2?
No, it is recommended to go from I-2 to R-7. So if you have the Planning Commission recommendation in front of you?
I see.
There should be a color map as the last page.
Okay.
Yeah, that one I want to be R-7, just like the other homes on that side of the block.
Oh, I see, that's a house.
That's a house. And the one beside it, which is, I think, the one that you're asking about, considering he's not coming up fast enough, I believe is the, on the southeast corner of Borman and Wabash, that is a Bus Company Depot, and they're still in operation.
I see. Okay, so that's currently I-2, and that's going to remain I-2?
Yes.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I can't find the hand thing. I never could. I'm sorry. Yeah, Eric, when I went through all this over the weekend, I thought that the Law Department was opposed to adding these amendments for these two residential anomalies, the two houses that ended up having strange zoning. They're not part of the development, they're just something that Mr. Tiso, that you came across. And I thought they had said, somehow I thought they had said that they were not, they could not, for the advertising problem, support those two. I mean, the project sounds great. I'd love, I would like, I want to support it, but the, I'm worried about going through the process of the proper advertising. I'm sure that you did all kinds of due diligence personally with those owners of these two houses, to bring them into compliance with their neighbors, but is the Law Department still opposed? And if they're not, when they report, could they make, could they address that issue? Okay, but Eric, I wanted to give you a chance to respond yourself.
Certainly, and just reading their letter, and of course, you know, we can hear it directly from the Law Department, as I understand their concern, is they want to make sure that the council doesn't make a misstep. So, ordinarily, there is a requirement for posting of the property. In this case, by adding these two in, the project applicants that are doing the TOD project don't have permission to go on somebody else's property and put a sign up. So, that's a problem there. As far as in meeting the spirit and intent of the rules, why do we have postings happen? Because we want people who own property, who are going to be affected by something, at least know that they're being talked about. In this case, I reached out directly to those property owners, and one of them actually participated in the Planning Commission and agreed and asked to be rezoned. So, I think we meet a majority of the reasons, you know, by way of substantial compliance with the rules. And I almost wonder, since there is multiple properties here, instead of needing an individual sign for each property, if the posting for a comprehensive rezoning would suffice? The newspaper advertising, as I understand it, included those two properties in its caption. So, I understand and respect their position, that the simplest way to solve any question is to just leave this amendment out, but I think it would be certainly better service to these two property owners to fix their zoning at no cost to them.
I just want to say that, if I may, Mr. Chair, for a sec.
Go ahead, you got the floor.
I just wanted to say that you did a lot of work bringing these owners into the fold, and to advise them and give them lots of opportunities. My constituents don't know things are getting zoned unless they're, and now we're saying, well, they're part of this comprehensive. All I'm saying is, this is a good thing to do, but it's a bad practice, and it could happen the other way around, where somebody's got shut out and ended up with the wrong zoning because of a situation like this, where you're not there, but it's just a normal process, and it worries me, but I'll listen to what the Law Department says, but, because they, it just would not go through. Go back to amendments.
But they're off you.
Amendments. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Again, to my colleagues, make sure you mute yourself, because we're getting feedback. Councilman Dorsey, do you have your hand up? You want to, you got a question or a statement?
And it speaks to this matter, and it's really the question for the Law Department. I just, maybe I'll just say right now, I hope that they'll speak to the issue of severability or separability here, that should we pass this bill with the amendment, and some, somebody were to challenge the legal authority to rezone these couple of additional properties, it, I assume that that would not affect the rezoning of the primary properties that we're here to, that were originally drafted into the bill, just, and I'm anticipating them speaking to that.
Okay, thank you. My concern too. Any other cast people have a question for Mr. Eric Tiso? No? Okay. BMZA was favorable with the amendments, DOT had no objection, so we're now, we're going to go into the Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, this is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. Obviously, there needs to be a finding of mistake, and it seems like those facts are present here. With respect to the notice, under the zoning code, both the City Council and the Planning Commission are required to have notices by publication, posting, and mailing, and in all of them, the contents of those notices have to have the address of the subject property or a drawing of the boundaries. And while I appreciate that these particular owners of these two additional properties likely had actual notice, the notice isn't just for the owners, it's for the community, and nowhere does the signs have the addresses of the two amended properties. Obviously, the publication in the newspaper for the council hearing did, and it appears that there was first-class mailing, again, for the council hearing, but on its face, it violates the zoning code. I do not know whether or not the Law Department would sign off if it includes the amended properties, but the larger question is really, what would a court do? Usually, with separability, a court will say that it's clear that the council would have passed the bill without the offending part, and that part will stand, but of course, I can't, you know, I can't guarantee that. And again, obviously, if nobody challenges, nobody challenges, so, you know, there's a risk there, but technically, no, it didn't meet notice. I appreciate Eric's argument on comprehensive, and under the definition of comprehensive rezoning in the zoning code, it requires that the ordinance be initiated by the government, which this wasn't, although arguably the amendments were. But the real problem is, even in comprehensive rezoning, the signs that are put out for the community include all the addresses, or at least a map, and that's really what's missing here. It's not so much the notice to the property owner, it's the notice to the community that's by the posting. And so, obviously, again, I can't speak to whether the solicitor would direct us to sign this bill for form and legal sufficiency or not. Certainly, if the amendment doesn't go in, we would have no problem. I just don't know what would happen if it, if it does. And again, you know, generally, a court would probably save the parts that are fine, but you know, it's not necessarily a guarantee.
Okay, I get it, I understand. We want to keep it clean, but, so, let me speak, so I say this straight. Again, with Eric Tiso talking about it was comprehensive rezoning, it was administrative mistake, and you're saying that doesn't, that's not going to carry any weight? If someone in the community was to take this to court, then the judge would make the decision, and then this zoning would be invalid, we'd have to come back again, am I correct?
I mean, that's certainly the possibility, because the sign doesn't give the public notice which properties are included. The signs that were posted don't include these amended properties, even though owners obviously would have a difficult time challenging, because they clearly received actual notice, it certainly would be subject to challenge in general, that the community didn't receive notice of the additional properties to be included. But again, and, you know, risk benefit, if you don't anticipate, you know, a community objection, then, then, you know, there's obviously, you know, less risk there, and as Eric said, nobody's intending to pull the wool over their eyes or anything like that. I mean, a court may, may say that that's important, but certainly, you know, it's going to depend on the challenger. If it's a member of the community saying that they didn't know that one of these added properties were being rezoned because they didn't see the sign, I mean, they would have certainly a valid concern there.
Okay. Hillary, to the committee members and the participants, I want to turn, ask Councilwoman, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton with her district, I'd like to hear her input or opinion on this, Council Vice President.
I, the community is definitely full aware of everything that's going on, you know, everything has been vetted out, shared, even before it came, before the, the commission. So, I'm pretty confident, and knowing that area and the two properties that it's affecting, I'm just, I'm confident that we, we could move forward with this.
Okay, so, reading you correctly, so everyone understands that you'll be, you'll make that most of the move, the Planning Commission's amendments, and we can move forward?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice President. Any other, any other colleagues want to chime in, have a question?
Just one last question for the Law Department, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Hillary, does it, not that, look, I think that the Council Vice President is, is correct, that it's pretty safe to assume that, that nobody's going to raise an issue over this. Just so I understand, and out of my curiosity, in order for a council, a community member to be able to file a suit to challenge this, is there anything that, is there any actual harm that needs to be done to them in order to give them standing, or is the mere fact that they didn't get notice enough?
That, that is a great question, and, you know, I don't, I didn't research that, I don't know if that would be enough. I mean, on the face, it doesn't comply with five, six, or one. And so, you know, it's going to be hard, because, again, if it's one of these people who Councilwoman Middleton indicated knows that this is happening in their neighborhood, knows these properties are included, and in the particular facts of that case, it can be easily shown that while the address wasn't on the sign, the community did in fact know, and this person was included, then a court's going to probably have a hard time, you know, overlooking that. On the other hand, if it's somebody said, look, I had no idea, I thought those community meetings were for properties I didn't care about, then I think it's much more likely. So, things probably going to be fact-based, but I'm not sure that the person has to have something like actual pecuniary harm to them, you know, because someone else's property is being rezoned. It's normally, you know, normally not that level, but again, I haven't really analyzed the cases.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Council, Council Dorsey, are you okay?
Yeah, I think it's pretty, it sounds to me pretty unlikely that somebody's going to file a suit against the city over this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Housing report, did I miss that? Did they give a report, housing?
HCD was favorable, you want to hear a response from them?
Yes.
HCD?
I'm here, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
And I see you, go ahead.
Okay, great. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We are in favor of this particular bill, and we do stand by our report.
Okay, Councilwoman Middleton, Vice President, is that good?
Yeah, yes, that's fine.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for the Law Department or Councilwoman Middleton? No?
No.
Councilwoman Clark, you got your hand raised, go ahead.
Yeah, I can't find the button that raises a hand. I just want to explain and apologize, but I cannot support this. I don't want something like this setting up, and everybody's saying, you know, years ago, yada, 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 and in that case, no, this is in good, been done well, been done according to the postings that my neighborhoods rely on. It could be a bad thing, it could, Eric, you have vacation, and nobody tells anybody, and it happens, and I, it just worries me, it's land use, and it's always, so, I just need to explain why I can't support it. I love the development, it sounds great. These two amendments are what I'm against, okay?
Okay.
It's nothing personal.
Okay, I just got, I just got a question to Hillary, responding to piggyback on Councilwoman Clark, and I believe Council Vice President, regards to her community, but my hypothetical question, Hillary, is that the bill passes, it goes to the Law Department, and then, A, the Law Department, if they, if they give a favorable report, and the mayor signs it, and then the developer is in the process of developing, and then someone puts a lawsuit in, saying because of notification and the signage, what happens? Is there a stop work order or the development, and then they take it to court?
Chairman, that's always possible, that's the worst-case scenario. The standard for severability, as I was trying to convey to Councilman Dorsey, is generally, would the legislature have passed the bill, understanding that the portion that was added might come out?
Okay.
Standard, and so you probably meet that standard, and I think the court would probably allow the properly advertised part that the developer is, is working with to go forward. But again, you know, there's no guarantees.
Likely.
That's a risk, but it, it seems like here, you, you likely would save that portion of the bill.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, we went through the agency reports. Matt, do we have anyone, any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we may actually have two agencies left, Baltimore Development Corporation and Parking Authority.
Okay, thank you, Matt. BDC was favorable, and the Park and Authority was not opposed. So, thank, public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder for everyone joining us, the public, please use the raise hand function to let us know if you would like to testify. Right now, we have one hand raised, so, Ms. Domso, please go ahead.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Alyssa Domso with Ballard's Bar on behalf of Conifer Realty, the applicant. Since a lot of the sort of time and energy is going into the addition of the properties, I'll sort of address our position on those amendments, and then we can talk more about the project and the findings of fact for the rezoning. You know, when planning first presented these two anomalies, which in our view are, as land use professionals, are pretty obvious mistakes, it made sense to us to add them, and we were willing to be accommodating, as the, as Councilwoman Middleton said. You know, it makes sense and helps our neighbors, but obviously, if the Law Department has doubts or would be unable to sign the bill for form and legal sufficiency, we, we can't risk. So, we're moving forward with our portion of the project. So, we can talk about that more, obviously, but that is, that's our, our position as the applicant. If we were to move forward without these amendments, my understanding is we would need to meet the legal standard for a mistake as a basis for the rezoning, so I will go ahead and talk about that some more. As was mentioned in the Planning Department staff report and in Mr. Tiso's testimony, this is a property that, a assemblage of properties that has been under common ownership for quite some time. This is a former cement manufacturing facility, they made cement vaults, but they now ended up under three separate zoning districts despite being under common ownership in 2017 when comprehensive rezoning- despite being under common ownership in 2017 when comprehensive rezoning passed. Um, so we have TOD 2 as part, as one portion of the site, um, an I-2 portion of the site and an R-7 portion of the site. Um, that's not particularly rational. And, um, I actually think that if you look at the, all the permitted uses in those three zoning districts, there's literally nothing that you could build in all those three districts. That Venn diagram doesn't have a center. Um, so I think that was clearly a mistake, um, at the time. Um, the, it mentions in the Planning Department Report and also in the Law Department Report that a portion of the property would not be eligible for residential at all, which is correct. Uh, the, the back portion, the I-2 portion would not be able to accommodate any residential uses under the current zoning at all. And I would point out that part of our community outreach and engagement is, uh, the Towanda Neighborhood Association. If you read their support letter, um, they talk a lot about sort of our ongoing discussions and, you know, the, um, the changes that were made to the design of the building at their request. And part of what they wanted was a building that was more set back from Cold Spring and from the residential community to the east, which actually sort of caught, um, necessitated this rezoning as, as part of the assemblage. Um, it really sort of pushed the building onto the I-2 portion of the site. Um, so that's part of why, in addition to sort of being the rational result, it really was the community's request to see the building design that made sense in their community. Um, so the rezoning, um, will fix this mistake and accommodate much-needed affordable housing next to the West Cold Spring Metro Station as really one of the few opportunities in the city for true TOD density on the metro lines. Um, I do want to speak a little bit to the, um, the standards in, um, the findings of fact in section 5508B3 um, for the additional standards that were, are applicable under any rezoning. There, uh, the committee needs to find that the existing uses of property within the general area of the property are sort of, um, uh, in accordance with the rezoning. And we really think that the TOD zoning and this project in particular make a lot of sense for it to transition to a residential community. Um, it's within a larger cluster of TOD on both sides of Cold Spring and the metro station. There was clearly an intent at the time to create a node of TOD zoning. Uh, it's just that the zoning line didn't go far enough. Um, and as I mentioned, this is a vacant industrial property and has been for some time. There was obviously vision at the time of comprehensive rezoning to, um, transition to a larger residential or mixed-use development, uh, which is what the TOD 2 zoning, um, indicates. But that was not, as I said, the zoning line was not drawn far enough. And this will, um, allow that vision to have TOD 2 density and affordable housing at that corner, uh, be realized. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the attorney before we move on? No? Matt? Go ahead. Councilwoman Clark, you have the floor.
Uh, I, I just wanted to tell the, uh, attorney that I, I thought that the documentation that she provided to the city council on this issue of the larger district was one of the best presentations, clearest and most helpful I have read in a long, long time. And I just wanted to make sure to thank her for that. Because usually it's sketchy and it's not complete. And it's, it's like dashed off. And this was so helpful. The presentation that was written up that went with the bill. Thank, so I, I want to thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Matt, any testimony? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so.
Yeah, Councilwoman Middleton, you have the floor.
You know, listening to, um, the attorneys and just kind of reviewing all this, uh, uh, it's, I don't want any of this to affect or have any flaws in the project. So if, um, we need to, you know, stop the amendments and they go and do the posting and do whatever, um, can that be done?
Yes, I would say so. Um, the, the only hiccup is the, is the law department, Councilwoman.
Right.
This is Hillary. I mean, if you want to have another set of hearings and you, you put out proper notice for both of those, there's, there's nothing wrong with that.
I think that's, I think that's the, probably the best route to take. So we don't, you know, we don't have any defects anywhere.
So, so that takes care of Councilwoman Clark issue. And so, in other words, we want to, when you're saying, Councilwoman Middleton, in order for the development, which is positive with affordable housing, is to keep it clean. And if they want to come back and rezone those two properties, then they can put a bill in to do that.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, all right. Any?
Yes, this is a lot of, it would work as well. They could just rezone these other two properties in a separate bill.
Okay. Any, anyone else want to add to this?
One last question for the law department, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey, you got the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Hillary, the, the Planning Department, I believe, is pulling together a, um, kind of an omnibus, um, set of, um, recommended, uh, amendments to the zoning code. Is this something that can be put in there and does it still need posting on the property? Uh, if it's happening, something like that?
I mean, there, you could always amend the text of the zoning code, change notice, um, for particular situations if you wanted to. I don't know that that's in there, but you could.
We don't want to do that. Go ahead. I, I think that I'm going to follow the, the Vice President's lead. It's cleaner and if they want to come back, you know, we can, uh, the.
I don't, I don't, Mr. Mr. Chair, I don't want to, I don't want to delay today's actions on, you know, um, just the progress of the, of this particular bill with those amendments. Go ahead, um.
Uh, yeah, I didn't, I don't want my question to be misunderstood. This was a general legal question for the law department. Is i- i- if, if incorporated in with a set of other text changes to the zoning code, can an individual property be, uh, be rezoned, uh, essentially like a map amendment or something like that?
No, it wouldn't be. If you do a map amendment of any kind, you would need all but the same notice that's in there now. Um, the only way it becomes a pure text amendment is if you change the notice requirements through the whole zoning code. And then, you know, the future property wouldn't need them. But, um, you couldn't just like tack this one on to another bill without needing the, the notice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we're going to be, leave, leave, we're going to be losing Councilwoman Clark in a few minutes. Is there any other questions? So we go on to public testimony? Any, any other tough public testimony, Matt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do not have anyone else who's, uh, who would like to testify.
Okay, so that takes care of the, of the public testimony. At this time, I need a motion to move the finding of facts.
So moved.
Moved by Dorsey. Do I have a?
Second.
Second by Clark. All those who favor the finding of facts, say aye.
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 Those who oppose, say nay. Uh, the finding of facts is passed. This bill did have amendments. Uh, is anyone going to make a motion to move the amendment?
What?
No motion to move the amendments for the planning commission? So now I need a motion to move the bill?
Bill moved.
Moved by Clark.
Second.
Second by Dorsey, right?
Sir.
Let me get the sheet. Uh, couple of, uh, vice singer is yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark?
Oh, yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello is yes. Dorsey?
TOD good, yes.
Dorsey's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Pinkett?
Yeah.
Pinkett, yes. Stokes? Stokes is absent, has a prior commitment. The bill, seven, an affirmative, one action. Bill passes and will come out on second reading on July 20th. Uh, that concludes City Council Bill 20 dot zero five three one. We have, we have, we have one more bill that we got to come out to vote with. We had a hearing and we recessed. This was City Bill, City Council Bill 20 dot zero five one two. It was the rezoning of 1301 East Ford Avenue. Councilman Costello asked to go into recess because to the developer and the community. Councilman Costello, you want to chime in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Um, we do not have an MOU in place yet, but I would like to move the bill at this time. I have discussed that with both the developer and the community and both of them are in support of it. Our expectation is that a signed MOU will be in place over the weekend. So this will be ready to go, uh, and to be double-read on second and third reader this upcoming Monday. Uh, but I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to expedite it and get it right to the point where it's ready to go. Uh, so I do ask for my colleague's favorable consideration. Uh, and again, I would note that I've discussed this matter with both the developer and the Locust Point Civic Association and both parties are in agreement with this approach. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so the mediation will be done before the Monday's council meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. And if it's not, I have, uh, committed to both the developer and LPCA that we will not move the bill on second reader.
Okay, good. Do I have a motion to, to move the bill?
So moved. Second.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, uh, sorry to interrupt. I think, um, we typically do findings of fact. I think we, uh, skipped over the findings of fact.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, we did do a finding of facts. Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
Mr. Chair, uh, if I may, I, I'd like to move the finding of facts. But before doing so, I'd like to note that there was a set of findings of facts that were presented by Carolyn Hecker, uh, who is counsel for the developer last week. And I'd just like to confirm with Victor that that's all good before moving to finding of facts.
Victor, you there?
Yeah, that, uh, this is Victor from the law department. Councilman, that is absolutely what you need to do. Move, move the findings that were provided by Carolyn Hecker.
So, yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the finding of facts that were presented to this committee by Carolyn Hecker on July.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. By Clark, all those who favor the finding of facts, say aye.
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 Those who oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts is passed. Um, so we go to motion to move the bill. Costello, moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dorsey. Vice singer votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello is yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett, yes. Stokes? Stokes is absent, has a prior commitment. So we have seven, the affirmative with one absent. Bill passes for second reader and will come out Monday, the 20th. This concludes, uh, voting session of City Council Bill 20 dot zero five twelve. Thank you for all the participants. Everyone be careful and have a safe day.